For those in attendance, please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome all of our friends and neighbors and colleagues in joining us in this regularly scheduled September 3rd, 2024 city council meeting. As you come in, the double doors, which would be to my right, to everyone else's left tonight, you walk through those doors, there'll be a desk. On that desk, there's a sign-in sheet. If you're a guest for this tonight, please sign in. City clerk, can I have a roll call?
Yes, Councilwoman Morrissey. Caladino?
Here.
Pratt? Sharp?
Here.
Soha?
Present.
Stuccio?
Here.
Veer?
Here.
Wolfram?
Here.
Mayor Stockford?
Here.
You have seven questions.
Thank you, Katie. We have had correspondences from Councilman Morrissey and Councilwoman Pratt. They will not be present tonight. We'll move into approval of agenda. City manager or any members of council have any changes they'd like to see made to the agenda tonight? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Motion on the floor from Councilman Soha, seconded by Councilwoman Sharp, to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, we've got an agenda. We'll move into public comment on agenda items only. During this time, the podium will be open. Please limit yourself to one trip to the podium and please limit your time to three minutes. And please remember, during this particular public comment period, you can only speak on something that has a direct tie to something that's pressing on the agenda. Also, we've got a public hearing regarding the vacation of East Galloway Drive and a portion of Summit Street. There will be a public comment period during that time, so if that's what you'd like to speak on, please wait until that time to speak on that particular issue. Also, guys, we're gonna have, we're gonna be very strict about the three-minute time limit moving forward from this point. So, if I let one person go over three minutes, then I have to let another person go over three minutes, and then we've got seven minutes, and then we've got eight minutes. We're just gonna follow the rules and we're gonna strictly go with the three minutes. If your time is up and I cut you off, I'm sorry, I promise not being rude. It's just decorum. So, the podium is now open.
So, when I left last time, I went home and I had to watch the rest of it, so I want to make an apology for leaving early. I didn't realize on the time when you guys go into your private thing, it took up a lot of my time. I looked at the clock and it was like, I gotta get out of here. So, I want to apologize for that. And then at the end, you said I had made some errors. I went back and looked at my notes. My notes were correct, so I decided to listen, and yes, I did make errors. Not, it should have been a hundred thousand dollars and not ten thousand. So, I just came up to apologize, and from now on, I'm not gonna double schedule anything on these nights. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Anyone else? Public comment? Podium's still open.
Hi, my name is Megan Angel. I live at 200 North Hillsdale Street. And I'm kinda late to the party, finding out about the closing of Summit Street and Galloway Street. But this led me to look through the development agreement that you folks approved at the last city council meeting with the college. And I tried to read the whole development agreement, but there are no exhibits to what is online. So, the proposed site plan is not visible to me there or anywhere else on the city website. I would really like to see the site plan, if there is one. Also, there were other exhibits referenced in the development agreement. They are not attached to what is online. Thank you.
Thank you, madam. Any more public comment? One, two, three. There it is. Go ahead, Jack.
I would like to speak about the public safety meeting. I think that was a good idea about the jaywalking that was brought up. Those churchgoers that park behind the courthouse, of course, there's no sidewalk there for them to walk on without going down to the steps, going up to get on the sidewalk. So, they all jaywalk over to the church, which is really a pain. At the time, they're going to church and then they're leaving church. So, I think Robert's idea was a great idea. You need to start making them go in the corners and start walking like everybody else has to. The other thing I wanted to speak about was the dial-a-right advertising. I think that's a great moneymaker for the city. But, with that being said, I also think the city limit signs is a great moneymaker for the city. If you're gonna charge one to advertise, you need to charge them all. We got three colleges in this town of eight thousand people, but yet we segregate one. I don't know if we're, what we're doing, if we're partial to one or what, but we do have three colleges in this town. We need to respect them all the same. Ted can speak on how much it costs to have an advertising sign like a billboard sign. The college should not give it anything less than what anybody else would have to pay. And if you're gonna let them advertise on there, then post it for bid and let people do, just like you're asking them to do on the dial-a-right. There's no reason you can't do that. The other thing, I'm just gonna speak on this. I know it's coming up in public hearing, but the paperwork I read, the college does not own all the property yet that would be affected by this vacating these properties. So, with that being said, my opinion would be, once they get the properties purchased, then give them the right to do it, or give them the right to vacate the property, but don't do it until they actually have all the property. Because they're, you're affecting private citizens now when you start vacating that property, not just making an allowance for the city. I know I went to a meeting once, it was a zoning board of appeals. The college told Mr. Smith that they were gonna be on the board of directors for the West Street Project LLC. The only trouble was, I owned the LLC. And I said, "No, he's not," which shouldn't make you go back to start one, because there was a false statement there, because the papers were filed under my LLC name. They should have had to refile, which they didn't for some reason. I mean, I think we all realize why they didn't, but they didn't have to refile, which was definitely not right. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Any more public comment? Any more public comment regarding agenda items? Podium's still open. Seeing none, we'll close the podium and move into the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we've got approval of bills, city MPU claims of August 15th, payroll of August 15th, city council minutes of August 19th, finance minutes of August 19th, public safety minutes of August 26th, and then our annual vote is on there as well. Any discussion regarding any of the items on the consent agenda? Councilman Paladino?
Someone requested that we waive the background check for the deer hunt to incentivize people engaging in it, because not many people do it due to the deer population. So, I don't know what it costs, fifty bucks or something, but maybe that's something we could do.
Thank you, Councilman Paladino. Is that right? Not many people engage in it? I thought we had more people that apply for it than what we can usually give out permission to do it. And we're using a lottery system.
Well, we only have a certain amount of property that can be hunted, and it's primarily private at this point, so it doesn't allow for very many hunters. But we've had success in taking some deer out of the population, and we've always done the background check as part of that process. Scott could give you the reasons why, but he's not here tonight, but I know he's been there before.
Thank you, Dave. Any more discussion on any of the items in the consent agenda? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion on the floor for Councilman Sharp, seconded by Councilman Veer. City clerk, can I have a roll call?
Yes, Councilwoman Caladino?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
Soha?
Yes.
Stuccio?
Yes.
Veer?
Yes.
Wolfram?
Yes.
Mayor Stockford?
Yes.
Seven zero votes.
Thank you, Katie. We will move into communications petitions. First item, letter A, Willow Street stop sign update. Jason?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. At the public safety committee meeting on August 26th, Sergeant Pratt and myself spoke with the public safety committee on our findings. We had some issues up there with limited site visibility from a site triangle issue, pavement width, as you started off, from twenty-three foot nine, transversing down to seventeen feet. Also, limited site triangle with, for an uncontrolled intersection, and then the grade of the hill going westbound, limited eyesight per visibility for traffic. They could draw obscure traffic motives. Based on our findings, Sergeant Pratt, the police chief, and myself recommend to leave the stop sign on both the eastbound and westbound traffic at X Street.
Thank you, Jason. Any questions for Jason? Okay. Yes, sir.
I just wanted council to be aware and the public that the Millers came to us and asked us to check into it because they had a U-shaped driveway with two entrances. Unfortunately, one of the entrances was a thin, this setback from the stop signs that the state of Michigan requires based on the site angles and everything. And when we looked at it, we wanted to see if we could make an exception and remove the stop signs, but then we learned if we did so, the city could be liable should any accident happen there if we had removed the stop signs against the states. Suggestions or their rules, and so we decided that it was not within the city's best interest to do that. To make amends for that, if you wanna call it amends, the city went above and beyond for the house on the corner there, widening their driveway to fifty-four feet and making special exceptions there. We know that, I don't think there's another fifty-four-foot driveway in the city.
Not a residence.
Not a, in a residence. So, I think we've gone above and beyond to make amends to the family on the corner, even though it is a bit of a discomfort for them, and they're gonna have to make adjustments on how they park. But as we've witnessed with our road projects and everything, and we're digging into some of the ordinances and the depth of them and what's required for the city, I think it's important for us to maintain integrity there and not make simple exceptions on the wind. And I appreciate what Jason's done, and he's actually offered to go back and do some more infilling and some more work to help alleviate the situation. So, I just wanted council and the public to be aware.
Thank you, Robert, and thank you, guys, for exploring that option. I appreciate it. Any more, any more questions for Jason, conversation, council members? Thank you, Jason. All right, we will move on in communications petitions to item letter B, Hillsdale County Commissioner update from Commissioner Ingles, and I don't see Commissioner Ingles out there tonight, so Doug? So, I guess we've got no Commissioner update. All right, we will move into introduction and adoption of ordinances, public hearing regarding the vacation of East Galloway Drive and a portion of Summit Street. We'll now open the public hearing, and we'll start with comments from City Manager Mackey.
Thank you, Mayor. As was presented at the last council meeting, we set the public hearing for tonight on a resolution to vacate Galloway Street, a portion of Galloway Street, a portion of Summit Street. As noted in the description, council also approved the development agreement that was negotiated between the city and the college, so that has passed. This is the second step of that process for the city. There's a third process, which is the ordinance that would come after the resolution potential is passed, and then the colleges have a part to accomplish this. So, with that, I'll take questions from the council during that process, and I could be, Matt from the colleges here, in case there's some questions from the colleges' standpoint.
May I, please, come to the podium, please? Just in case anybody has any questions. Okay, any questions for Matt? Councilman Soha?
It was mentioned in public comment that you don't own all the property associated with the development. I was under the assumption that it did pass the line.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, Councilman Sharp?
Site plan. You guys give us a site plan. Do you chew a little bit?
There's an architectural sketch that kind of has a high-level overview of that. I'll be honest, I don't know the legal definition of a site plan. I don't know what it requires to do.
Basically, it's like, what it'll affect the Galloway, or how much you're gonna lose of that. That road's gonna be completely closed off, right?
What do you mean by completely closed off? It'll go all the way across the road, yes?
Yes, I just, I just wanna be sure. And you're, how far down are you guys going? You bought two houses on Northwest Street, correct? Biltner being one of them?
Correct, yes.
And that's where it ends?
Yes.
Okay, that clears a lot for me. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Any more questions for Matt? Thank you, Matt. Stay handy, though, please.
I'll be around. Thank you.
Okay, council, any? Questions for Dave? Discussion? Okay, now we will open the podium for public comment. During this time, during this public comment period, please limit yourselves to three minutes and limit your trips to one to the podium. And during this particular public comment period, you have to, it has to have a direct tie to the vacation of East Galloway Drive and portion of Summit Street. So, the podium is now open.
How's everyone tonight? Kell Pollock in Seventy-two West. And on hearing that, I would just have to ask one question. If we're at this phase, how could we not have a site plan? We're having a meeting like this. We should all be able to come in and review an actual plan that shows what the city's giving or selling and what the college is gonna do with it. I would think that would have been a very simple thing for the college to present at this point. Instead of just, we're buying up properties and we're gonna do this, and there's nothing, apparently, that shows the public here what's going on. And if I could just ask, is there a purchase price, actual price, that the college is gonna pay for this? Has that been settled?
Purchase price to whom?
To the city, from the college, for the closure of these streets.
There, there is no purchase. The property is not owned by the city. It's simply property that is dedicated to the public for public streets.
Okay, on the public, those streets of that city, public taxpayer usage for a long time, a hundred and fifty-some years. Hillsdale College has nine hundred million in endowments. One point one million for an administrator. They purchased a winery in California. You go into other communities, when I was chief, I know Albion bought their city an aerial truck. And the college should pay the taxpayers then of this community. There should be some financial gain out of this, because when these properties are gone, they don't come back. And it's been that way for many, many years, and that's a complaint of most of the citizens in this town that I hear repeatedly, is a massive conflict of interest, and that the college, everything's a free ride. And I don't wanna hear this, they pay so much in taxes. The last I saw, they paid the equivalent to the Kroger Plaza. That's not much for that area. Also, yeah, they are the largest employer. A lot of those people don't make that great wages, let's face it. Twelve bucks an hour in housekeeping and in other areas, and they don't wanna live in the city. And I just, I'm one of the people in this city, a taxpayer, that have just felt for too long they've got a free ride, and that seems to be the situation again. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. I mean, would we call the three hundred thousand dollar payments and the one point seven million dollar endowment in exchange for the vacation, would that be, would you call that a dollar amount?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, sir. So, two million dollars. That's a payment. Thank you, Kevin. Anyone public comment?
According to these papers that were in the pack, and I'm not sure why they weren't updated, but it states in there that the college does not own all that property. Now, they can say what they want, but until they lay the deed on the table, this paper says they do not. So, and I'm not sure why the public wouldn't have got the up-to-date information, which is what Mr. Pollock was talking about. You need, that information needs to be out there. And I cannot believe they do not have a site plan. I mean, that's totally ridiculous.
Thank you, Jack. Any more public comment?
Oops, I'm sorry.
Megan Angel again, 200 North Hillsdale Street. When I initially read the development agreement, I was kind of hopeful that, as it says in paragraph four, Galloway Street would only be closed between Northwest Street and Summit Street. But of course, it's apparent from tonight's materials that it will be closed from Northwest Street to Hillsdale Street. And that's where I live. I'm very familiar with that intersection. It's a fairly dangerous intersection when students are around. People come out of the parking lot. There's a lot of cross-traffic every which way. I certainly hope that going forward, the city council will consider the fact that students don't stop when they leave the parking lot at the bottom of, as it feeds into Hillsdale Street. Without knowing what the college is gonna do, it's kind of hard to speak to this part of the plan. Are they gonna close the street? Is that street gonna be open for student traffic to those parking lots? I don't have any clue. I don't know if you know either. Have you considered that by eliminating Galloway Street, you will channel all of that traffic down to Fayette Street, or to Division Street, if you wanna lose your car, or to the next street, North Montgomery? I hope that you, if going forward, you'll consider upgrading, upgrading, replacing those streets. They are, especially Division Street, is in a not resurfaceable condition. Northwest Street, by the way, is not that much better after all of the construction that's taking place. It's terrible up there. And I know that's a pretty recent street. I don't know if you did a traffic study. I know there are no sidewalks on Montgomery or Division. There is a sidewalk. I don't know who built it, perhaps the college, perhaps the city. But on Galloway Street, there is a sidewalk. So, you're eliminating the sidewalk that I use every day. Traffic study? I don't know. And we're concerned about giving one point two million dollars to the foundation. I know that city, city money is overseen, it's published. Everybody can see what city money is spent on. I don't know why, what the thinking was of putting the one, one point two at the Hillsdale Community Foundation. Last but not least, I'm not a forester. I don't pretend to play one. But the big oak at the top of the hill has a circumference, as measured by me, just to go over the tape measure, of two hundred and ten inches. It looks to me like a white oak. If it has a two hundred and ten inch circumference, it is estimated to be three hundred and thirty-four years old. What happens to that tree in the site plan? This community always broadcasts tradition, values, valuing things from the past. Things that are beautiful. What about the tree? I am here to speak for the tree, and I hope that your forester will address this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you, Jane? Can you, Matt, can you answer any of those questions that she had?
Sure, you start at the top and just go through them. I'm sorry, I don't recall all the ones I've had.
She asked if the street was going to be closed.
Yeah, so like I said during the question from council, my understanding of it is from Summit to West Street would be where the hotels span the street. From Galloway to the Summit will remain an access street, I'm assuming with access to those parking lots. Obviously, a summit will be closed with the roundabout that will not be able to travel through there. I will speak on the tree. I know, I can't, again, we have not, maybe this perhaps answers the site plan question as well. Given the status of even these conversations, there is not a complete architectural rendering, construction plans for what this building looks like. We have an architectural rendering that shows in the general area and kind of within the boundaries of the property that we own. Some of those, I know we're very much aware of that tree and recognize the history of that tree. I do not know, I cannot answer this to again, there is not a final plan, I would say, if it stays or leaves, but we are very much aware of that.
Okay, those are the only questions I remember. Was there another? Oh, yeah, it is, it's one point seven, and the community foundation, not one point two.
Oh, I, I can actually speak for that club. So, the reason we approach a community foundation about holding the endowment rather than the city is that there are, as I understand it, state requirements on what the city can do as far as investing goes, that kind of hamstring the interest rates that they can acquire. So, the idea of putting it in the community foundation would be to allow them to get a better interest rate for their investment, so, thank you.
Thank you.
From my experience in dealing with community foundations, typically, there is some kind of document, some kind of plan that the expenditures must fall within. It seems to me that we're kind of
Sharon Meischer's here tonight with the community foundation. Maybe you can go ask Sharon. Maybe she can give you some more information regarding that. Podium's still open? Go ahead, madam.
Bernwoda, three sixteen South Street. I just have a lot of questions. Like, when you vacate the street, so what part of Summit is, are they gonna close it? Treat it like an alley? Is it still gonna be maintained in the winter? I've been at Summit for a while, and we talked about this, Mayor and I, when the college built their church cathedral, whatever you wanna call it, they had construction trucks that shouldn't have been on Summit hauling all kinds of materials back and forth toward the street, really big. And it hasn't been fixed since then. We had talked that maybe the college would help fix that first couple of blocks. So, I just have questions. People that live in that area, why isn't there an information packet? What their plans are, timeline, who's going to maintain things, who's going to do what? I was taking my surprise a couple of weeks ago. I started seeing this on the internet and everywhere else, and I live four houses down from the church, so as one of you said, the college kids' traffic is enormous. And I don't have a problem with the college, but Summit is basically a one-way street when college is in, because we're the only street that has that parking all the way down. Parking lots are overfilled. Everybody parks there. It's, it's a traffic hazard. So, I just have a lot of questions. Like, if you guys are gonna vote on this and approve it, and you're gonna have a public informant, I would think there'd be an info packet, like what we're all looking at, a timeline, that type of thing. So, that's my
Yes, madam. I understand that. Sorry, this thing's new tonight, so this is our first time with this. Yeah, I, I mean, I can't speak particularly to the information as to in what sort of order that you wanna do something like this. And I haven't been pretty to inside conversations with the college regarding how much information that they have actually done at this point, how much groundwork they've done. It does, it does occur to me that perhaps this could be the first step. Okay, it does occur to me that perhaps you would want to and see if the city would vacate the streets before moving forward. before moving forward with a bunch of architectural renderings and, I mean, would that be the case, do you think?
I think if they've already got an architectural rendering, they probably got a pretty good idea of what they're looking at timeline-wise and more than just that. So, if you're going to give them the streets or let them pay you for the streets, just let us know, like who's gonna maintain the streets, where exactly it's going to be.
Yeah, we, I don't, we don't have that information.
Well, then you ask them for it.
So, the street will still be, the part that is not vacated, so they're only looking to vacate that south three hundred feet that connects to Galloway Drive.
So, it says two hundred and sixty-two feet.
And it's three hundred and two feet, is it not? On Summit Street-
Summit is two hundred and three feet.
Two hundred percent of the amount. It's two hundred and- So, it's only that two hundred and three feet at the tip of Summit where it moves to Galloway Drive. There will be a cul-de-sac that it will be installed at the end of the rest of Summit Street that exists. There's only folks who view Summit can come down, turn to the cul-de-sac and go back out, since they will not do that.
You won't be able to walk the entire way.
The city will, it will continue to be a public street. It will continue to be maintained by the city.
Okay.
It will still be part of the city's street system. The only part of it that wouldn't be is the parking that gets vacated, which is that. A couple hundred feet right at the end.
Right at the end.
And there, there is actually a, in terms of the site plan, there is a drawing or a set of drawings, sketches, as Matt referred to, that have been used as a placeholder for the site plan at this point that just generally show where things would go. And included among that, the BPU has prepared a drawing that shows where the, uh, the cul-de-sac would be on Summit Street. So, that is available if anyone wanted to-
You don't have a packet with it when you're supposed to, what, come to the city and request it?
Dave, was that in the packets?
Of course, you're giving it. Council packet.
It was in the previous council packet.
So, August nineteenth, city council packet, if you go to the city webpage. And it wa, an artist rendering. And it, and it really, uh, because Summit is in correct shape. And really regarding the conversation that you and I have had with it, when this came up, I honestly thought that this could probably lead to some attention to Summit Street because why would you wanna be leading to a, uh, driving up to a, uh,
Million-dollar hotel, huh?
Five-star hotel with a, on a street that's-
Third world.
Third, it, it really is, Summit's in really bad condition, so. Any more public comment regarding the vacation of Galloway?
So, I'm actually a county employee, so I was able to pull up the GIS map. Um, college does own all that property across there, from Hillsdale to West Street on both sides. It's on the GIS that they own that. So, that is confirmed that they do own it. Um, my concern is that the people on Summit Sweet Street, I mean, I don't live in that, in that area, but I'm just talking with the people over here, um, that would be, end up being a dead end. Now, are you gonna, do you like the assessment for them to fix that road? Because if you're gonna charge them each five thousand dollars to fix the road that was tore up by the college doing all the other stuff, that wouldn't be right. You know, because you said about fixing it up. Now, that's a five thousand dollar assessment for each one of those to fix up a road that they said that when they built the cathedral, that, that road got tore up. Also, it will increase, from looking at the GIS map, the people on West Street are gonna get all that traffic that people used to go through on Summit. I don't know if it makes a difference or not, but that road is, will be their next main road, turn into a main road. But college does own both properties on both sides. Summit will end up being a dead end. And hopefully, they don't get charged assessments. And West Street will be your main, main road again.
Thank you, Sharon. Andy, do you have a, a comment? Dave, did you have something you wanted to add?
Just a, a comment on the cul-de-sac. Actually, that's a responsibility to install and pay for by the college. So, that will be paid for by the college. They will also pay for all the utility relocation as part of this project, which will be electric, water, and sewer. Um, and in regards to it, uh, I don't know, tentative timeline that's been discussed, if, if everything goes as hoped, um, they would like to see the project under construction um, in two thousand twenty-six because next year would be basically the year of moving the utilities. Um, so they wouldn't be able to start construction probably into spring of twenty-six if, if everything went as planned. As was mentioned about the site plan, it, um, it is, uh, as, um, City Attorney mentioned, we do have that, uh, uh, draft or drawing that's in there as a placeholder. Um, typically, one does not do a site plan until they know that they can actually do what they're asking to do. Uh, because if they're turned down, they would have
Wasted money.
wasted a substantial amount of money to do that. Um, so that would be something that would be done once they get through this vacation process, um, which then also has to go to the, to the local court as well. Um, so we're one part of it. Tom could explain that if you had a, a deeper question on that. Um, so we passed the development agreement resolution and subsequent ordinance. And then they have to take that information along with their replating to the, it's a district or county or whatever.
It's to the circuit court. So, on the, the Sub, uh, Land Division Act, there is a provision or procedure for applying to the court to amend the plat. Basically, they would go through the amendment to plat. If it was approved by the, uh, by the court, then they will actually prepare a new plat of the two subdivisions affected showing that those streets are no longer part of the dedicated public streets. And also, they would include as part of the dedication would cul-de-sac.
And lastly, as was, um, kind of mentioned at, um, my, the college representative, Matt, and the question was brought up about the community foundation. I think Tony might be able to add some to this as, uh, we, Tony, Councilman Veer, myself were the ones that, um, worked on the negotiations with the college. The idea with the community foundation was to set up a perpetual revenue stream that could be added to in the future. So, others could actually contribute monies, uh, whether it be another business or even the college at a future time, um, could put revenues into the community foundation, which could either be left there to grow or, um, the interest could be taken off, um, annually. Um, and the idea behind that was is that it would be, um, set up to provide support for essential city services, which were deemed police, fire, roads, um, those three things at this particular point. But it would also leave it to, up to council to make future decisions about those resources. So, that is what we're hoping.
Thank you, Dave. Tony, you have anything to add here?
Yeah, with the endowment, it was kind of my intention that it would be a, the city another revenue stream that they wouldn't have to go after set of taxpayers. You know, currently going forward, we've fixed a lot of the streets with SADs, which has presented some hardships for the property owners affected. And it's just because we've gotten this, ourselves in this terrible state because of the priorities of past councils have not prioritized the streets. But with this endowment, it would enable the, the city again to have a funding source. And my, my thought on it would be that it would keep growing, getting larger, and becoming a bigger portion of the city budget. And I know they worked, uh, with Myers Company in the town as far as all the relocations of the power lines and things like that. That being said, the college is gonna pay for all the power line relocations. And it's, and they have to do it to the specs that are state-approved and, uh, BPU-approved. So, uh, you can think of it in terms that those residents may be in the closest proximity of the college or might end up in the end having the more dependable, not that it hasn't been in the past, power sources and utility functions. Um, and with the fact that this college is gonna pay the city uh, basically two million dollars to vacate these streets. And as Tom mentioned earlier, the city just vacates it, but it's up to the courts to actually finalize the deals, deal so to speak, with the, uh, plat, uh, redoing of the plat. But, um, just in this day and age, as far as with the current climate, uh, I think this is really a good thing for the city. And granted, I, I can appreciate the concern that many have come with the fact that they can't look at a site plan. But I would think, uh, a project of this scope to produce that site plan, not knowing if, if you'd say they're gonna come to view it, uh, to, uh, the, the real thing is, would probably be in the neighborhood, I would think of, uh, multi-million dollars just to do that. But there, they did, as David said, had a, a kind of rendering of what the hotel would look like. Along with the fact, to keep in mind that the, all the building codes will be followed and that they could actually be erecting the hotel, restaurant, and so forth on their, on their property. So, I, I still think that, um, this is a real good deal for the, for the city because you can think of it also from the standpoint of, uh, the city has issues with maintaining its current roads. So, they're getting alleviated, maybe, I think, maybe a tenth of a mile of Galloway and a little portion of Summit. And, uh, I think in the end, uh, it's gonna be a good thing for the residents of this town.
Thank you, Tony. Dave, did you have something to add to that?
Just a couple of more points that came to mind. Uh, as the tree was brought up, uh, the city staff is, is, um, definitely aware of that. And we've had discussions about that particular tree that's right next to the road. Um, actually have seen renderings where the tree is included as kind of a focal point. And that's kind of what we're hoping will occur with that particular tree. It will be kind of a roundabout leading into the col, the hotel entryway with this massive lego. So, that's the hopes. Hopefully, it will be in a, in a place that it can be worked around. Um, but it has been discussed and the city has looked at all those trees. Um, also on the site plan, it will have to go, the plans for the, the building, the parking, the whole, the whole project will have to go through planning and zoning review. Um, so it's not, if this is approved here today, that, um, they can do whatever they want. No, it will actually have to go to those committees with the city to review. And ultimately, probably have to come back to council for, for the, those final approvals. Um, so, um, just wanted to mention that, that, uh, there are multiple reviews still left to be done.
Thank you, Dave. Hope that got a little more information out there. The podium's still open if anybody would like to use it.
My name's Brenda Coxwell. Um, we used to live in Hillsdale, but my aunt still lives on Northwest Street. She's about five houses from Galloway. And i, in essence, building a hotel and or a restaurant in that area constitutes really being now a commercial property, correct? And if there is enough square footage that that kind of roof will displace that much water, my concern would be that since she lives fairly close to that area, is any kind of water runoff and the control of that water runoff, as well as you're looking at a lot more traffic in that parking area at various times of the night? So, now, there's more noise pollution in that area where my aunt's living and has lived for, you know, seventy years. So, I have a concern about that being more of a commercial, um, property resident, rather than a residential. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda, was it?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, there, there is a hotel up there already at this point.
Not right there, that here doesn't- Across the street. Yeah. That's, that's down Northwest or the Gap, uh, the Dow Center. She's the fourth house in, I know plus two.
Thank you, Brenda. Any more public comment?
Uh, George Angel, I live at two ninety-eight Hillsdale Street. Um, I would just like to reiterate what was just said about the water. Hillsdale Street from Galloway North is becoming a disaster over the last couple of years because every single time it rains, it's completely flooded. There is a sign that says water over road that is now a permanent residence on the side of the street. It gets propped up every time it rains. Somebody from the city comes along and props it up. I think that before something like this goes ahead, somebody needs to think about what's gonna happen to all of that water after you put a big chunk of ground under concrete again. It's at the top of that hill, everything runs down. The college built two big cashmen's below Galloway just a couple of years ago. They're not enough. They don't hold what's coming down the hill already. And I don't think that putting a whole bunch more concrete up there is gonna help that situation. I think it's just gonna make it worse. And on a more minor note, I think it's worth considering what truncating both of those roads is going to do to the provision of emergency services to people in, in the area and how it's going to possibly block or make more difficult access for those services. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Dave, can you speak to the water issue over there?
Um, Jason did, I'll have Jason come up. He can speak to that because he's probably the one who put the signs up. But I would say, any, any new water runoff, um, would have to be part of that site plan and how it would be helped with. That, that would be one of the things reviewed, um, by the city staff and engineer when the project moves forward.
Yes, uh, the area he's referring to, um, that was overrated a couple of years ago. The storm sewer does not go that far south. Um, so at some point now or in the future, we need to extend that, uh, storm sewer just farther to the south to intersect those intersection or to the approaches that he's referring to. Um, now, we get a site plan to come through. I know years ago, we talked about taking all the water from West Street, taking it to the west to go right to the river. So, I don't know if those will actually intersect or not with the site plan will come from performance. So, I don't know if that would actually fit true with both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Oh, Jason.
Don't walk away, okay? Sorry.
Go ahead, Tony.
Is, is that sewer that's kind of in front of the, uh, by that sewer house you're talking about, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I, is that just a drywall there? It's not connected?
It's not connected, correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that needs to jump, I'm, uh, I can't remember exactly where it hooks up, but right before wheels are out. Um, on Division Street, there is where it actually hooks up and it hasn't been ordered.
Okay, and, and Division is also kind of the, the same sewer, just a drywall?
Yes, sir.
Any more questions for Jason, while he's at the podium?
Yeah.
Councilor Charlie?
Yes, sir. So, Summit Street, there's been concern about that when they vacated that, um, the road is in terrible shape. The one down the hill that used to be retired, Smalls and Perez, what's the name of that street?
Division, sir.
Division. Um, anybody drive down Division's crazy in the first place to go down that street. I mean, it is bad. It's one of those third-world roads. But I would like to see, if we're gonna do this, maybe they should get something to return to, like, fix that street for them, pave it, because they're gonna lose some of it, but they still live there. And they should, we shouldn't make them do a special assessment because this is something that's beyond, it's gonna benefit everybody, but they should also benefit too. So, I would like to see us come up with some way to pave those two streets. And as far as traffic goes, people are still gonna use College Street, Fayette. They're gonna wanna go around Northwest Street the whole round, but they have that option. But Summit Street is terrible. I mean, it, it, there's some, like Will Morrissey said last council meeting, there's some streets that they're parked and the rest of it are bad. some streets that they're parked, and the rest of it are bad. Well, this is something, maybe we can get the college to help us out on, and we could ask them nicely. I would like to see that, because that's what these people want, and I wanna make sure they're not forgotten.
Sure.
Thank you.
If I may add one thing to that as well, if I may. When we're looking at Summit Street, all of that drainage there is, um, bleach basins as well, um, put back in the forties, so none of that system's connected either. Um, so I still go back to kind of what we talked about, um, West Street really needs to go to the west, and localize that as a different project with the road projects you're talking about.
It would breed my sincere hope that we could run into a situation similar to, uh, the construction that happened on West Street when the survey center was put up. That the college at least fixed that portion of West Street on their own dime for something similar, uh, with Division and Summit.
Yes, nicely.
Yes, sir. Any more questions for Jason? Thank you, Jason. Yes, sir. Podium is still open, all the comment is still available. One trip to the podium, good sir. Is that what you said? That is what I said. Yes, sir. Thank you, Jack. Podium is still open. Nobody's gonna speak, I'm gonna close the podium, guys.
I'll say something, sure. Uh, Galloway Street's become half, it seems like, that's okay with me, but just mentioning that, it sounds like what people want, fix Division, fix Summit, save the tree, uh, learn more about the endowment. I think that's brilliant though, by the way, because, like, I can put twenty bucks in it. People should be educated a little more on how endowments work too. Uh, if I put twenty bucks in, this twenty buck, bucks doesn't disappear ever, it just earns interest, and then they spend the interest. So I think that's a fabulous way for the city to grow its revenue over time, um, and people can just give if they want to, and then suggest to the management team, hey, I want this essential service to be beautification or whatnot, can you manage that for me? So that's great. Also, nice job on fixing the roads over the last few years, I've seen a lot of great work there. That's not related, but, uh, maybe, um, back into relation to Galloway thing, I think it's a fabulous project, um, people have legitimate concerns, and I do think you should go back to the table with the college and see if they could at least help the residents. There will be more noise pollution and light pollution, that's a fact. And then perhaps in the future too, you can use a special assessment district and loop the college into that as well, and get them to, um, pay almost the lion's share of those road projects after the fact too, because I don't know, you're not gonna wanna bother fixing them before construction, you're gonna need to wait till twenty, twenty-seven or eighty to do that probably, so, you know, those are my comments. But, yeah, the tree, I happened to see the tree the other day, it's fabulous tree, it's huge, it's amazing. If you haven't had a chance to see it, go up to Galloway and go check out the massive white oak, it is quite spectacular.
Thank you, James. And yeah, the endowment is brilliant. I know Councilman Soha, I've been speaking a long time about funding city services through the endowment portion, so I feel like that's something that's worth bringing up, since, uh, Councilman Soha's repeated that theory oftentimes in the past forty years. Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Anyone vote to comment? Okay, we'll close the podium, we'll open up the council table. Guys, anything else? Thank you. Not my watch. All right, guys, anything? Councilman Soha?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I think there are many valid arguments have been presented tonight and things to consider. I think the college is trying to be a good neighbor in this, um, and I think, you know, having a beautiful, somebody who spoke to beauty whenever she was speaking on the oak tree, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name, but, uh, that's one of the things that colleges is inspired to accomplish, is make beautiful things, and, um, they're working and endeavoring diligently to transform their campus into something that is this, and I think this, uh, hundred and fifty-eight proposed hotel project, the hundred and fifty-eight rooms with this artist's rendering, if you just go back to last council's packet, it's there on page sixty-two, um, I think the college will hold true to that, so I'm excited about it. I do hope that they can manage to do something and maintain that oak, because that is beautiful tree.
Councilman Wolfram?
Uh, yes, I'd like to also mention that I would very much like to see them preserve the oak. It's a magnificent tree, and, uh, I'm committed to, to maintain that, and perhaps, uh, people would enjoy seeing it, if they were standing on the hill.
Thank you, Councilman Wolfram. Councilman Soha? Anything else, guys? No? I undertake a motion. This motion is to adopt the attached resolution to vacate part of East Galloway Drive and to, and the south, two hundred and three feet of Summit Street, motion on the floor from, uh, Councilman Soha, seconded by Councilman Sutjol. Can I have a roll call, City Clerk?
Councilperson Sherr?
Yes.
Soha?
Yes.
Sutjol?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Wolfram?
I must abstain.
Mayor Stockford?
Yes.
Paladino?
Upstate.
Five yes, two upstaying, guesses. Resolution three six twenty-four.
Thank you, Katie. We will now close the public, uh, hearing. We'll move into new business, Sandy Beach admission discussion. This is something that I added. And I was hoping that I'd recall up at a public services meeting before now, but I don't think you guys have had a public services meeting since the last council meeting, uh, something that Sharon's brought up. Um, you know, I mean, you guys okay? Okay. That's all right, that's all right, I had it placed on the packet. We have always had a five dollar fee to get into Sandy Beach to park your car. Once upon a time, that was a creative way to get around the fact that in the Sandy Beach deed to the city, part of that was stipulation that the public would never be charged to get into Sandy Beach. We've been very responsible with our money, and I feel like one of the most consistent complaints that I hear from the citizens of Hillsdale is that the taxes keep going up, and they don't feel like they're getting a lot in return for it. So, I would really like to explore the possibility, and I know we just voted on this, and I know you guys hate doubling back on stuff, but keeping the ten dollar fee in place for non-residents of Hillsdale, and allowing residents of Hillsdale to park free at Sandy Beach, I think this would be a small thing in a very healthy department, what I mean is direct apartment, I think it would be a small thing that would go a long way with the residents of the city and mean a lot, and would seem to mean a lot to a lot of people. So, the rest of the parks are free to get into, and I know for a fact this is something that we can afford to do. And, you know, maybe having people park at Sandy Beach for free would increase the traffic in there, maybe we'd sell more at the concession stand, and maybe we would not even see any sort of negative financial implication from it. But even if we didn't, the health department's healthy, all the public parks are free to get into, and I really feel like this is one small thing that we can do that wouldn't cost the city a lot of money, that wouldn't mean a lot to the residents of Hillsdale. So, yes, sir. Councilman Sutjol.
I think it's a good idea. The question is, do we know what makes it an opportunity, how many people are city versus non-city, the vote difference?
I'm not sure about that. Michelle might have those numbers. Jason, do you have those numbers? I mean, I don't think we keep track of that, because we don't have any reason to, so, Dave?
I would recommend that this, this vote of public, um, service committee, um, and we can get that information and look at it, um, because there, there are some things to consider, so, I'd hope you're on it.
I'm fine with it going to public services, but I, you know, committees are often where things go to die, so, I hope.
Not always.
No, I know, not to you. I know not always, but, you know. Yes, sir. Councilman Soha?
You spoke to a charter or something, you suggested that the public wasn't ever, was never supposed to be charged, do you know what I'm understanding?
I'm, I'm talking to the deed to Sandy Beach, when that land was gifted to the city, part of the stipulations of the deed was that the public would never be charged to get into Sandy Beach. Hence the reason that we charge for parking and not entry into it. And it wasn't this council that came up that cooked that up, and it wasn't this city attorney that cooked that up, but once upon a time, a city attorney cooked up the fact that we could charge for parking and not violate the deed. We've always charged to get into Sandy Beach, and I feel like that was a sneaky thing to do, and I'm not, and it wasn't us, like I said, we're not the ones that came up with it, but I think if that was something we reversed on, I think it would be something that would mean a lot, especially to the young families in the city of Hillsdale, and I think it'd be a big win for the city, and, and it would just be nice to do something that doesn't cost the residents of Hillsdale more money, one time. Councilman Trump?
I grew up in Hillsdale, and I can remember Jim Enman running the beach, and we paid that, you had a little sticker on your car, I, I don't remember what it was, maybe two bucks to buy the sticker in a year? Fifty cents? So, they've always charged. I remember back in the day when we had school buses going there, all the schools in the summer would go there. That, those days aren't there anymore, but the beach was something, it was the place to go, it was the diamond, back when Jim Enman ran the beach. I'm not saying it's bad now, it's just, it's different.
Yeah, and I'm not even suggesting just getting rid of it altogether, we could charge it, we could still charge non-residents, but we could allow, we could even do the ten dollars for non-residents, but, eh, eh, a year ago, or even this summer, five dollars for all residents to get in, we just raised it to ten. Maybe we keep the ten dollars for non-residents, free for city of Hillsdale residents, might be a zero-sum game at the end of the day, that, like I said, still means a lot to a lot of people in the city of Hillsdale, so. Councilman Beer?
So, I was always under the impression that, uh, it was just Owens Park, but was Owens Park, Sandy Beach is part of Owens Park?
I think they were all given to the city at the same time, that's my understanding.
I, I think we need a clarification on that. I thought it was just Owens, but I could be wrong too. So, we, we can go back and check that, and if it goes to committee or it comes back, or if it stays here, we can get that.
So, yeah, I, I haven't seen the deed, so I could be speaking falsehood. This is something that I heard from former city manager, so, before, before you, Dave. Councilman Wolfram?
Uh, I would agree with, uh, making it ten dollars for non-residents and free for residents, and I'm not sure that we would actually lose revenue, it depends again on how many people are coming and visiting the beach without, you know, if they're non-residents, so it, uh, I, I, I think it's a good idea.
Thank you, Councilman Wolfram. So can we go to committee with this, guys, or?
That's the recommendation.
It's okay with Rob, we'll do it Monday the ninth, five thirty. It's okay with Dave, Jason should probably be there, maybe Michelle as well. Yeah, I'd like to look at the numbers. I mean, when you go there, it seems like twenty percent of plates are maybe more Indiana and Ohio, a lot of people from outside of the city limits, I mean, it's a great facility. What I was gonna suggest, if we had already done the meeting, was that we immediately just revert back to the five dollars while we analyze it, um, and stick with the ten dollars for non-residents, but, yeah, we should look at it more.
Well, the, eh, that, that isn't even going to affect all next summer, it's not at currently in effect, and the, the very, the, like I said, I have not seen the deed myself, and I, I haven't seen the stipulations of the gift, but the fact that we don't charge people that walk through, and charge people to drive in, makes me think that what I was hearing was probably true, that entry to Sandy Beach was never supposed to be, was supposed to be free per the stipulations of the gift.
Just, just so you're aware, because we'll need to take a look at this, there may be some legal, uh, illegal roadblock to making distinction between residents and non-residents for charging for use of the park.
Okay.
There is some case law in Michigan on that, uh, if I recall right, it was brought on equal protection grounds, um, for example, city authorities to do that, to keep African-American residents from Detroit from using their city parks, um, then they made it ready to be resident, and it made for that, for parkland and some other things, the, the restriction, the ability to make a distinction between residents and non-residents is more restricted than it is in other areas, so we'll just wanna take a look at that before we actually adopt it.
Okay. I mean, and, and that would only be for parks, because there's a lot of things that we make a distinction between, like the compost site used to be free for city residents, but not free for people that are, that are arrested, so.
Thinking of state law, I'm pretty sure you can buy a recreation passport as a Michigan citizen for fourteen bucks a year, but if you go there to buy it as a non-resident, it's like thirty-five.
Yeah, I think the state, state of Michigan does the same thing, so.
Well, that, that's the distinction between benefits for people who reside in the state whose tax money goes to fund those, and people from outside the state, and it doesn't necessarily have the same analysis for local municipalities. I'm not saying that the conclusion would be that you couldn't do it.
Okay.
I'm saying we wanna take a look at it and make sure that you can, if there are any restrictions, that the way you adopt the policy is such that it complies with them.
Absolutely. That's, that's what we have you for, so. Councilman Wolfram?
Uh, my guess is that there's a number of people that use the docks for their boats, and they could easily be non-residents, and so I still think that, uh, you, you may end up not losing money if we're able to do that, um, they might just, a lot of people that are using the boats and live somewhere else.
Councilman Trump?
Uh, I've been on this council since two thousand and seven, whether or not, and, um, Owens Park was one of the issues we dealt with in car shows. If you remember in the past, the, um, one group was, who was it? Carrie Dodie and that group, the, uh, chamber, and they want to use the park there, and it said right in the contract that there could be no alcohol sold in Owens Park. So they had to go across the street where it wasn't Owens Park and sell their alcohol. So, there are stipulations in the contract, or the agreement we had with the family, so definitely that's something Tom would have to look into. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Anymore? Councilman Beer?
I would just, uh, David, could you find out, or have at that public service meeting, uh, the deed restrictions on said parks? Thank you.
Anything else, guys? I don't think we need a vote, just you guys can hold a committee meeting?
Yeah, um, okay, I brought this up last time, but then we didn't do it, uh, it'd be nice to have actual revenue, projected revenue with the change, and then projected revenue with a rough estimate of, uh, the resident, non-resident distinction, and of course we'll have the legal analysis of that.
Awesome. Thank you, Josh. Do we get on this item? Thank you, council, appreciate it, thank you, guys. Okay, we will move on to new business item, letter B, M.DOT tree trimming contract. Jason?
Thank you. Over the last month, uh, our office contacted, uh, M.DOT, there's, uh, site clearances, site for signs, uh, dead wood, uh, hazard trees, um, and height issues on the highway are becoming an issue as we have not trimmed through, um, the M.DOT through a fair for many years. So in accordance with the city hills, the trip like made this contract, I reached out to M.DOT, um, they did grant us, um, approval to obtain solicitor three quotes of this project, as there's a twenty thousand dollar cap for this project for this year. The area is from Broad Street, um, from East Bacon to Steambird, on both sides of the road, West Carlton, uh, from North Canadian to West Fayette, the south side of the roadway and West Carlton Road, from West West Carlton, uh, from North Canadian to West Fayette, the south side of the roadway, and West Carlton Road, from West Fayette to Arch Ave, the west side of the road. Um, we obtained three quotes with complete tree care, um, having the most hours of service available for the twenty thousand dollar cap that we have. Um, with that being said, I've asked for council to approve the work, um, to complete tree care service in the amount of twenty thousand dollars. Um, this, all this twenty thousand dollar expenditure will be reimbursed by MDOT through our program.
Thank you, Jason. Any questions for Jason? I'm taking a motion to award the M ninety-nine tree trimming project to complete tree services in the amount of twenty thousand dollars, which will be reimbursed by, uh, motion to the floor from Councilman Soha, seconded by Councilman Beer. Can I have a roll call, please, City Clerk?
Councilperson Soha?
Yes.
Stu Scholz?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Wolf from?
Yes.
Here, Socker?
Yes.
Councilperson Palagino?
Yes.
And Sharp?
Yes.
Sounds good, all of them.
Thank you, Katie. Okay, we'll move on to new business and into Ms. Lainey's reports. We've got a number of appointments tonight, so the first, uh, all these appointments to Brownfield redevelopment board. Apparently, in the, um, in the statute, in the statute for Brownfield redevelopment, members of Brownfield redevelopment board have to be members of EDC. Um, so, these are just all the members of EDC appointing to basically refurbish that board, except for Rachel Lott, who will be in the appointment. Then there's Sandy Valance on the housing commission, that is actually Dave's appointment. But Dave, you probably won't care if we do these all at the same time, do you? So, I see you vetted it. Valance is that, Sandy, is that a, uh, male or a female? Okay, I'm sure you vetted her and I'm sure she's a good appointment, so any questions? Do I have a motion to make all appointments? Motion to the floor from Councilman Trump, seconded by Councilman Soha, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, we'll move into general public comment. During this time, the podium will be open, please limit your comments to three minutes, please limit your trips to one to the podium. And remember, you may speak on anything your heart so desires. Podium is now open.
Hello, my name is Russell Miller, you all know me. Um, usually I get up here and get all emotional, but today I don't think I'm going to. It's more of anger and hate. Mr. Pel, uh, Pelagin, I appreciate your help, because I feel you've done helped me. Mr. Soha, I feel like you threw me under the bus, and you've been down there and looked at it. Second of all, I got a permit for this driveway, you guys keep saying no, no, no. Um, you guys had, it was inspected by the city. Um, they didn't let the way we did it, they made me go through and make like, I mean, six inches instead of four inches, fifteen foot path. And so, you know, what about that? Why did you guys approve me to get a permit and approve me to have my driveway? Second of all, we, uh, you guys are, I was, I was listening to you guys come when my mother-in-law passed away, and we were listening to it on the radio. Coming here to see this, that's how I know all this stuff. Uh, across the, Jason says that nobody has a approach over fifty-three foot. He's full of crap, across the street is twice as long as ours. Second of all, we told him we didn't want the long approach, but he decided he was gonna do that anyway. Third, he, with the way they changed the elevation on it, now the approach is down here where he put it, and our driveway is here, and it's from here to the attorney get that far up. So, now I have a drive like that to go up. Um, so, and then, fourth, I wanna say, I may try to call Dave to talk to Dave. Try to, oh, I'll sit down, maybe we can have a civil conversation, come to the head. He knows that I have hurt feelings with Jason, and then Jason calls me. It's like, I, I don't know, I, I just, it, it's, if I, I don't know what you can say, then I just hear that, no, 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 there's gotta be something we can do, guys. There's gotta be. And I'm a respectful person, I don't wanna be disrespectful to anybody. I mean, I know he's doing his job, but come on, there's something we can do, please, that's all I'm asking, I'm sorry to waste your time.
Thank you, Russell. Anymore general public comment?
I know when they do the call to sag, that it's gonna have to meet the requirements for the fire engine, being able to turn around and, or without backing up and pulling ahead, backing up and pulling ahead. So, I hope that's one thing they do. Um, I think what should have been done was, rather than vacating those streets, put a stipulation in there, because if the college doesn't do the hotel, by chance, then you've given them the streets, basically, in the end. And I know that you guys, probably aren't gonna believe this, but they put that beautiful track out there on Barber Drive. Uh, got a special use permit, went through Hillsdale Township. Now, they don't have the money to put the bathrooms in. That's why you see all those porta-potties out there. So, that tells you they're not overflowing in money. So, who knows if the hotel will even go? I mean, I'm hoping it will, but I'm just saying, that really surprised me when they said they didn't have the money for the bathrooms. I mean, that's a little ridiculous, so. Then I've got this thing, and I know I've heard what the attorney said and everything, but I would think the people, the spouses work at the college and their income's based on that, that should be a conflict of interest, in my opinion. I know they say it's not, I understand that, but I just think it should be. And, and even if it's not, I would think the people that are involved in that should be able to stand up and say, well, I'm gonna pass on this because, and state their reasoning. It looks a lot clearer to the people in the general public. Uh, Mr. Sharp saying that he was gonna resign. What I would do, I would, I would do a resignation, I would date it for eleven fifty-nine, at the last day you can serve. And that way, nobody can say he went back on his word. Because you would resign on eleven fifty-nine PM of that day. So, just to keep you in good stead.
Thank you. Thanks, Jay. Anymore public comment?
Hello. Um, two things, last, um, two weeks ago, when you guys had a council meeting, I actually asked somebody about why, where they collect for Sandy Beach was where it was at. It didn't make sense to me where, why it wasn't at the beginning. And then it was explained to me that it was a memorial and that the park was given, and there's some stipulations. And one of the things that we discussed was the amount of money that was left over to maintain that part of the park. Would it be, would you be able to, if you only charged non-residents, to move it to the front where everybody comes in? And then lower the rate, because you're gonna be giving two or three times the amount of people regardless whether they're residents or not? If the entrance had a gate at the front of the park when you go in as opposed to in the middle? It, it just seems, it never made sense to me why you had to drive halfway in the park before you had to pay. And then it was explained to me, and that's something that I don't think a lot of residents understand. I was completely like, oh, okay, well, that makes sense why you guys are, because I just said, who put that there? It was stupid. But it's because the first part is a memorial park, and Sandy Beach is a separate beach, or a separate part of the park. I, I didn't realize that until it was explained to me. So, that might be something that when you guys are coming to a decision, if you explain that, because I've only been in town for eleven years. So, if you explain that, it might alleviate some of the people being irritated or whatever about why you're doing what you're doing. Because that made a lot more sense to me at that point. Um, the other thing I wanted to bring up is the occupancy walkthroughs, because they're my favorite. Um, and I just had an occupancy walkthrough at a property. The walkthrough was on Friday, we received the paperwork on Monday, um, we informed the owner. He immediately went out that weekend and started working on a few things. One of the things is having to rebuild some stairs on the front. They, the residents have two, um, entries, so it isn't like they don't have access. But I can't get a contractor in two weeks, and if I don't get it done within two weeks, and I don't know if it's two weeks from the Friday or two weeks from Wednesday when we got the paperwork or informed the, we got the paperwork in the mail. And they're gonna charge me another fifty dollars for a reinspection, because I can't get it done in two weeks. I, I, I think we really need to revisit this, because it is very time-constraining, and I don't know about you guys, if you have any problems finding contractors or getting jobs done in, in immediately, but I do. And I, I still think that's something we need to revisit, because it's still a train wreck. Um, and I'm getting very frustrated. Uh, I couldn't get somebody to come in and drill a hole through cement so I could re-put in a dryer vent. And because of that, um, they pulled my occupancy, because it took me too long. So, they're gonna charge me twice.
Thank you, CJ.
Uh, one of the things to solve your Sandy Beach thing, years ago, we used to get, uh, we paid our taxes on time as a resident. We could come into the city and they would give us a sticker.
You hold on for one second.
Sorry, you're saying?
Oh, yeah, got that timer on.
All right. That should do it.
Okay. So, if you pay your taxes on time, we used to be able to come into the city office, and then we show proof we paid our tax on time, they gave us a sticker. And then you could use that for your city residents. If they pay their taxes on time, they get into the city, or if they can disprove, then we just have a sticker on our vehicle to get in and out. That's helpful. Um, but my question is, um, I'd like to know, I've been going through, um, the management, the whole budget. Going over the twenty twenty-three budget, I've been looking at your, um, the audit. And I wanna find out, um, what is this four thousand, uh, four million eighty-seven dollars? Four million eighty-seven thousand nine hundred and sixty-four dollars, um, that is unassigned fund balance. It says the city, says the money is available for the city's, um, spending at your discretion. If you divided that by five thousand, that's eight hundred and ninety-five homes that you could use to fix roads. Uh, also, all the property taxes have been uncapped lately in the city. There's been a big discussion on Facebook about all the city taxes. And since I worked for the county, I know there's been a lot of uncapping, so there's been a lot of extra revenue. So, I'd like to know what is the, the money that you're allowed to spend? I know you have to have some money, like the twenty-one million dollars, I'm sure that's set aside, because you always have to have a, a slush fund. But for the four million dollars, it looks like that's available for spending. So, why do you guys keep doing special assessments when you could use that money to put in, fix our roads? Or just use the interest from the twenty-one million dollars probably sitting in account, or the interest from the four million? If we get a hundred thousand after three years for one point seven million dollars, and that goes toward roads, then how could we can't at least use the interest from these accounts, this extra money? I don't know if it's extra, I'm still, I'm not an accountant, so I'm asking people who are accountants. But I'd like to find out, what are these balances, how much money do we, that we have un, uh, unrestricted? If it's the four million, I would suggest you use that to fix our city roads. Get that out of the way, and then start building the other accounts. But eight hundred and ninety-five people, when you divide that by, um, into the four million, can get their roads fixed without the special assessment. So, I suggest you just stop the special assessments, fix the roads, and then you don't have to worry again. And don't laugh about that. I didn't have special, you could have special assessments a long time ago, and our roads were better than they are now. And I know it's not on your guys' fault, I know the other people didn't take care of them.
Thank you, Shannon.
Calipok at seventy-two West Bay. Real quick, I'll keep another three minutes, so you don't have to. Um, I didn't plan on addressing this, but I understand, you know, the issue of where they collect at the beach. And as somebody that, I did go out there extensively the last two seasons with my grandsons, and, uh, they enjoy going out there. I think having, these are usually high school kids working there, and I think by having them down there, there's also the safety issue. That they are within view of other adults, um, they're within view of the other employee or employees that are down there, because sometimes they're, people are not friendly to them that are coming through. And, uh, I know there's no smoking there, there's no dogs supposedly, but you see them all the time. And when I mentioned it to one of the employees, he said, I'm not calling in, we've been threatened, we've been, you know. So, I think by having them within view of each other at least, it's a good safety issue, because these are young people, and there are some people that get, are gonna get very upset if it's a dollar or five dollars, um, you know, that they have to pay any of these. So, I think that, you know, possibly a spring training for the employees to let them know not to be afraid to call, you know, PD for a backup if they have a board or person, or something, might be a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Any more public comment, general public comment?
Hi, I'm Jessica Miller, Nine Lakes Street. Uh, I'm one of the most affected by the driveway. The change has drastically changed for us a lot. We used to wanna drive campers through it, work on them in the drive, pull them out when we're done. Bring our coach trailers through, pack stuff in it, unload it, much more convenient. Now, we can't do that. You talk about, well, we, we made an agreement, we opened up the center of your drive. No, absolutely not. As a homeowner, I was against it, I told everybody, no, I did not want that. Still, to this day, I do not want anybody pulling in the center of that driveway. There is a water line that I'm not gonna pay when it gets messed up. I will not pay for it. Somebody will hit it, they will drive over it, it'll get messed up, but it ain't gonna be me. I don't think it's right. I don't understand how anybody can get a permit for something, and it's, yep, we want it done this way instead of that way, we want this instead of that. You do everything the way that they want it done to get the permit, you do it their way, and then one day, you guys just rip it up? Where does that go? Is that still effective? Is that still good to today? It was paid for. We did have it. I guarantee you, if it had not been approved so many years ago, it wouldn't have had a six-inch concrete driveway for. But we had permission from, from the city. I don't understand where this goes. I don't, I still don't understand it. It's not making any sense to me. There's other houses where, yep, that's okay, yep, they're a college professor, they're okay. Let's go a couple blocks up, oh, that's the college, that's okay. I don't know how a two-foot curve, curve at the college is acceptable, but we gotta have twenty-five on an empty street? Where there's nothing but residential traffic for the most part, people that live on it, maybe a handful of others? But you curve off the drive, and I gotta worry about my family and my friends driving over the curb? Because it's always gonna drive over. It's never been anything but.
Thank you, Jessica. Any more public comment? General public comment? We'll close the podium, move into the city managers' part, Dave.
Thank you, Mayor, just a few things, uh, I wanted to mention. The first is, this Sunday is the fly-in from seven to two. There's a breakfast, thirty to seven AM with the exchange club. Um, and, uh, we should be quite a bit there for the family to view and look at, and there will be rides available as well. Um, we've just started our youth football, um, program, I think they started practice on Sunday. Um, this year, we have six teams, which is up two teams from last year. Um, last year was a very slow year coming back from COVID. About seventy kids, which was about twenty-five percent increase. Um, we do have a bid out, uh, for, uh, farming the airport farmland. Um, so that is out there, um, and open until October fourth, uh, for receiving, uh, bids on that. That can be found on the city website, and, uh, we've posted it, and I think advertised as well. As far as the Saint, Saint Joe Street project, that is pretty well finished up, they're just tidying up, tidying up the last minute, um, mine work and restoration. But otherwise, if you haven't seen that project, nice job over there. Um, the, um, Mitchell Research Center contract, um, the Mitchell Research Group have, have not signed that contract yet, just, this is for council's knowledge. Um, the, the contract itself is what was created at the last release. Um, they wanted to make changes to it, um, and the Um, they wanted to make changes to it, um, and the city attorney, John Lovinger, is out of town, worked on that. Um, so if, um, the changes stay, um, that contract will probably have to come back to council, um, because there were some things that, um, would change. So council had originally approved. Lastly, just, uh, so everyone is aware, we will be, this week, um, starting some seal coating work on different parking lots in the city. Um, some beach locations, so the DNR O-Mage, um, Owens Park, parking there. I think that works, supposed to start on Thursday. Friday, we have, um, the parking lot by the Elks, the Lower Library parking lot, Field of Dreams. We're there doing seal coating. And then Saturday, Kinkus Park and, uh, parking near the Baptist Church. Also, um, next week, um, they'll be coming to town doing the long, um, paint, long line painting. So we'll have quite a bit going on, um, in addition to the Westwood project, which is coming along well. We have a major physical work that's, um, getting done over there, so with that, now taking any questions?
Thank you, Dave. Any questions for Dave? Councilman Sharp?
The signs, somebody's saying Hillsdale College is a paper advertisement. Uh, those signs they put out there, they paid for those, those blue and white signs. We didn't pay for those, Hillsdale College paid for those, right?
Um, I believe they made, they, they made a contribution to the signs, so there was some, some portion of it.
Correct, so, I just wanna get that out there, that they did step up on that. I'm not a big Hillsdale College supporter, but I wanna make sure people understand, let's get it clear, because social media runs crazy, and this informs people on some certain facts. And so we have the fact channel. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Sharp. Any other questions for Dave? Okay, thank you, Dave. Public comment? Anybody have anything? Councilman Soa?
Thank you, Mayor, two quick things. Uh, Mister Miller, uh, you're not a waste of time, I appreciate you voicing your frustration. Uh, it's unfortunate that it had to come to that, but, uh, I just wanted you to know, I don't think your voicing that is a waste of time. And then, I just wanted the public to know, I picked up these as I walked the short distance from my house to here. I probably could have picked up a lot more, but these were obvious. And, um, this was on the street, so Miller Ultra, empty can in front of the post office here. And I just wanna remind the citizens of our fine city that, uh, you know, drinking and driving pretty much frowned upon, uh, I hope you get caught next time. And I would also encourage our residents, you know, let's have some respect for each other, and ourselves, and our city. And, uh, let's keep it clean, and, um, so that this doesn't have to happen. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Rob. Any other council comment? Motion to adjourn? Motion to the floor from Councilman Sharp, seconded by Councilman Soa. To adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. This meeting's adjourned.